Hawaiian Housing and then I'll go to the Hawaiian-only agenda. And so I wanted to introduce the members of my committee, myself, my leadership of the co-chair, my vice chair, Senator Jared Keho Kaloli, also members senators Laura Acasio, Lesihara, and Kurt Favella. Chair Keho Kaloli, I'm going to introduce members of the Health Committee at this time.
Okay, thank you. Members of the Health Committee are myself, and I also see Senator Joyce Sanbuenaventura, Senator Kurt Favella, and I also, also on the Health Committee are my vice chair, Senator Roz Baker, and Senator Sharon Moriwaki.
Mahalo. Okay, so we'll start with SB 905. And first up, we have OHA in support. Oh, it's written only. Then we have DOH in support. We have the Queen's Health Systems in support. If they're on the line.
Senator J.C. Mikeulina on behalf of the Queen's Health Systems, just standing in strong support. Thanks very much.
Thank you, J.C. Hawaii Psychological Association, support. Then we've got Taylor in support, Kamakana Akino in support. Did I miss anybody that's on the line? Testify on SB 905. You seeing none?
I'm sorry, go ahead. Aloha. This is OHA trustee and chair, Hululunzi.
Oh, yes, yes, proceed, trustee Linsy.
Sorry. Hold on one second. Okay.
This is the mental health, mental health bill, SB 905.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not speaking on behalf of this one.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, and you folks did submit written testimony in support of the SB 905?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, members, any questions, SB 905, the mental health bill? Okay, seeing none, then we're going to move on to the last bill on the joint Hawaiian health agenda, which is SB 982. And first up, we have, and this is regarding the Hawaiian burials. We have OHA, I'm sorry, the Hawaiian Caucus for the Democratic Party in support. And we have Hawaiian Funeral and Cemetery Association in opposition. Mr. Morford, yes, hi.
Hi, good afternoon.
Hello.
I would like to first say thank you, chairs, good afternoon, and vice chairs and committee members. My name is Jay Morford. I'm president of the Hawaii Funeral and Cemetery Association. And we stand in opposition of this bill, but I would like to clarify our opposition. It's primarily in regards around the regulation that needs to be looked at on both these dispositions. First, on natural organic reduction, which, to put it quite simply, is taking a human body and turning it into compost over a 30-day period. There's approximately two, up to 2,000 pounds of compost that a family will take from a compost facility and dispose it anywhere that they see fit. So there's no regulation at this time to be thought of on how that's going to be handled in regards to a compost facility. In regards to the alkaline hydrolysis, we sent in regulation that California implemented in regards to this process of disposition for alkaline hydrolysis. We feel that this process does satisfy for traditional Hawaiian burials and what they're trying to get at for the EV, but then again, this really wouldn't be a cremation process for traditional Hawaiian burials because of the amount of bones that are left over. So there's regulation around this process that needs to look at for pit permitting, and also in regards to the water discharge into sewer system, which is probably around pH 11 and from other places, they'll only allow pH 9. So we have concerns about regulation on both these dispositions. I believe that primarily what we're talking about in this bill is the alkaline hydrolysis. And I think that we've made our position clear that we're not opposed to people having a choice of what disposition they choose. But I believe that there should be serious regulations looked at and what departments are going to oversee what before this bill is moved forward. And we ask that you defer this bill until such time. And I'm here for questions if you have.
Thank you, Mr. Morford. Next, we have the Doro Mortuary Incorporated in opposition, Mililani Group Incorporated opposition, Nuwana Memorial Park Limited opposition, Fisher and Associates LLC in support. Mr. Fisher? I think you're muted. Okay. Now, now I think, yeah, there you go.
Can you hear me now? Okay, very good. Good afternoon, senators and committee members. My name is Dean Fisher. Thank you for allowing me to testify in support of this bill and the alkaline hydrolysis technology. I have submitted my original written testimony, and please read that as it addresses most of the Hawaiian Funeral Directors Association concerns. I'm a licensed funeral director myself with a Bachelor of Science in mortuary science from the University of Minnesota. I had the honor of working at the Mayo Clinic in the University of California at Los Angeles as the director of their Willed Body Programs. In my 37 years of being in funeral service, the biggest change that I have seen is that the independently-owned funeral home has been bought out by large corporations. Once these large corporations take over, they keep the name, but you get two choices. You get either burial or burn nowadays. And these current burial and cremation practices are outdated. They're harming the environment, toxic embalming fluids, pathogens, DNA, other body fluids are currently going into the sanitation system untreated. Carbon dioxide and mercury are going into the atmosphere and are adding to our global warming crisis. Alkaline hydrolysis is a game changer. It's safe, it's sterile. Companies like UCLA, Mayo Clinic, they wouldn't invest in this if they didn't know it was for real. So the technology has a 15-year track record that dates back to the Mayo Clinic in 2006. Minnesota was the first state. Since then, Washington, California, Oregon, all your neighbors to the east have done this. We've already reached out to the Honolulu Department of Environmental Services, and we're working with them. And then I also want you to know that the Hawaiian culture is deep-rooted. It supports the stewardship of the environment, respects the earth, and I urge you to support this so that the citizens of Hawaii can have a better funeral option. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Hawaiian Memorial Life Plan Limited, opposition. Leeward Funeral Home, opposition. Lamomi Khan, support. Lamomi is here? Matt, is she here?
Not present, Senator.
Okay, okay. Luana Alapa, support. Phyllis Kayan, support. Stephen Labrash, support. Carmen Hululunzi, support. Ken Ordenstein, support. Paula Isla, all support. Pohai Ryan, Pono Ledford, Hina Wong Kalu. Is she here?
Yes, I am, Senator.
Okay, yes, hi, Hina.
Aloha. Okay, one second. I, my testimony will stand strongly in support, but perhaps we could better use the time allotted for my testimony to answer any particular questions that you may have pertaining to cultural appropriateness or cultural understanding to better serve you. Is there any question that I could field?
Actually, I appreciate that. What we'll do is we'll do questions at the end. So if you can please hang on till the end of the testimony, and we may ask questions of you, Hina.
Mahalo.
Yeah, mahalo. And I'm sorry, Pono Ledford also signed up to participate. Is Pono here?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, yes, hi, Pono.
Hi, aloha, Pono Ledford from Hilo. I'm a physician on the Big Island. Yeah, I strongly support this bill. One of the biggest concerns that I keep on hearing is about the affluent that comes out of the system. Yes, it is at a pH of 11. But let's think about this. Milk of magnesia that people drink for upset stomachs also has a pH of 11. There's, you can buy alkaline water with a pH of 10, and it's, you know, it's a health drink, alkaline water. So as far as the technology and why this is important, it's because it'll allow us native Hawaiians to get as much of the bones as we can back. And that's what's important to us, is recovering that bones as a native Hawaiian, to be able to dispose of it and bury it as we feel fit. Again, getting back to the process, this process of alkaline hydrolysis is in use here in Hawaii currently. The veterinarians' office uses these systems when they cremate animals. And I'm not saying that humans or animals, no, what I'm saying is the technology has already been here in Hawaii, and where people are already using this technology. As far as, you know, material going down into drains, what do we do with bodies for embalming? When you drain the blood, what goes right down into the drain? The blood goes right down into the drain, doesn't get treated. Think about, I hate to say fecal matter, when we go to the bathroom in our own homes, that goes straight down, you know, to the waste treatment center. Whereas with alkaline hydrolysis, it sterilizes the material coming out. There are no bacteria, there are no viruses, there are no purons that can survive the process. So what comes out of this alkaline hydrolysis is a sterile solution. This is the same technology that's used in hospitals to get rid of biomedical waste. So... Yeah, I'll field any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mililani Trask in support? Aloha, unmute yourself, please. Okay, yes, we can hear you now.
Thank you very much, Senator, Representative, and I wanted to also thank those in your committee as well, even though I can't see their faces. I'm very happy to be here to support this initiative. It's long overdue. For over 200 years, the Hawaiian people have not been able to have a traditional way to bury our grandparents and our parents. You know, if you go into Hawaiian homes, especially on the homestead, you'll see a little desk somewhere in the living room with photos of grandparents and parents and sometime children, and vases there, not buried, because most Hawaiians can't afford the plot. They can't afford the two to five grand for a casket, for the casket liner. But with alkaline hydrolysis, we can return now to the way that our traditional burials were. It's no longer feasible, feasible to put a big emu by the sea in Kona and take your grandmother's remains there, to put the sterile waters after the emu has steamed for a night back into the sea, and to take the clean, long bones to be buried in the burial caves. We haven't been able to do it because there was not a technology here in Hawaii for us, the Hawaiian consumers. As Dr. Ledford has said, it's been here for 15 years. It's been used not only by private vets, but by the state itself. It is currently used by your veteran labs down in Kakaako. So the state itself has used it. But with this technology, we can receive back the sterile long bones and take them to the burial areas, return the sterile waters to the ocean. A few years ago, Muani Ki'ala died in Hilo. Her family took her remains to Doro. They were told that they could get the long bones back by a partial cremation. They were not told that the bones would smell of rotting flesh and still have sinew and tendon on them. We need to follow the lead of the state of Hawaii, which 15 years ago, down in the Kakaako Medical Center, decided that this was the safest technology. This is nothing new to Hawaii. When you go to the UH labs, they're only 80, about 80 gallons of water. Well, you need the larger one for humans. But this will allow us finally to be able to take care of those in our families and to have clean and sterile bones to go back to the Le'i burial caves. The reason why this is being used in 20 states of the Union is not just to meet the needs of natives, but to protect those states against pandemics that may be spread by air or by water or other burials in the soil itself. So we're so happy about it, and we believe that it's finally time for Hawaii to step in to modern technology, and we should be following the lead of our University of Hawaii folks, and also to support our Willed Bodies Program. Steve Labrash and his folks at U of H are also submitting testimony in support. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Ms. Trask. Cavei Correa in support?
Aloha, everybody. Thank you so much for giving me the honor to ask for your support in this bill. The reason that I am in support of this is because the alkaline hydrolysis is the best and cleanest way to preserve the EV. It's the best. And so when we talk about preserving bones as opposed to the flame cremation, you're saving about at least 20%. And the way that the bones are preserved is very critical because a lot of the times, the bones come out charred if it was just natural. That's why you see it all dusty and ashy. And with this machine and with alkaline hydrolysis, it comes out pristine and clean. So in terms of Hawaiian practices, this is the best technology available. Now, in regards to everybody having the rights to have their family or their loved one laid to rest, it is the most gentle and most affluent way for someone to be cremated. The natural way is to be flame cremated. You're left with bone fragments, and then it's now grinded up in ashes. You actually have the opportunity, if your father is a musician or an artist, to save his fragments of his fingers with alkaline hydrolysis. You don't need to remove any metal. You don't need to remove any of the mercury. And what comes out, actually in the technology that we have, we have access to, is you can actually modify the pH to come back at pH 7, which actually hasn't been, haven't been discussed yet. But that is an option as well, is to make the pH that they're so concerned about at 11 come back down at 7. So this technology is already available in California and many other states. And, you know, coming from the people of Hawaii and serving them, this is, to me, the wave of the future and also the best way that you could lay somebody to rest in terms of environmentally Hawaiian and also gentle. It's gentle. So thank you very much for your folks' time. I really appreciate it.
Mahalo. Pili Aloha Leloi in support. Did I miss anyone that's on the line for SB 982? Okay, seeing none, members, any questions? Yes, yeah, Senator Sanbuenaventura.
Thank you, Chair. The question is for Dr. Po and Mililani Trask. Mililani Trask first approached me about this bill, and I apologize that I did not co-introduce it. It just went by me real fast, but it seemed like a really good thing. But as you folks have both testified, as well as Pili Aloha, Cavei, is that the mortuaries are against this except for aloha mortuary. So if we pass this bill, other than this mortuary here in Honolulu, how are we going to implement it on the Big Island?
But my answer would be, I would open up one on the Big Island, or Pono would. And we would offer this to our people, you know, this hasn't been available as an option, but I know that people would get behind it, invest into it, because they want to lay their loved ones to rest in the best way. So that would be my answer.
Okay, so basically, Mililani and Dr. Pono, you folks agree that as soon as we pass this, that hopefully the funeral homes will be, would stand in line and at least offer it to, for native Hawaiian burials?
I definitely agree. Again, the community support that we've already had with this technology and being able to preserve the bones, it's incredible. So, yeah, I do agree. I think everyone would jump on board once we figure out the whole affluent concern. And again, you know, not to make light of it, but lemon juice, you can use lemon juice, and it will bring down the pH, so that it'll be safer, you know, to be 10 or 9, to be able to go into the drain system. But getting back to the composting of bodies with all that tonnage of material with alkaline hydrolysis, you might use maybe 250 gallons of water. And that water, that liquid that comes out, you could actually give that back to the families and, you know, use that to pour on Grandma's tree that she always liked.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I see, Mililani, you're muted.
How do I?
Okay, there you go. Now we can hear you.
Ah, you know, let me answer in this way. We went through this in a way last year. Mr. Jay Morford came in, and several of his monopoly grew. I don't know if the legislature is aware that in 2003, a new monopoly came in from Texas, Doro Mortuary, Leeward Funeral Home, Nuwana Memorial, Hawaii Memorial. They did the same thing last year to kill this bill, but they didn't tell you they were all part of the SCI monopoly, which doesn't want to upgrade their technology to accommodate the poor Hawaiian who is looking for a more culturally appropriate solution. My, when questions have been asked to me, I let people know that we do have the state itself involved with our veterinarian center in Kakaako. They have a way of testing the water. There are other alternatives available. Dozens of labs all over the US do this type of testing. There's no reason to use this as an excuse to prevent Hawaii's indigenous peoples from having a culturally appropriate way to provide for burials of our family. This SCI monopoly, Mr. Morford, and if you look at your testimony, it's the same group that came in last year. But the thing is, is that if they don't want, as private sector, to put out $400,000 to bring in at their cost this technology, let the Hawaiian people do it. It's important, when you look at who aloha is, they are continuing 150 years of Hawaiians in the funeral business, first started by Ken Ordenstein and his family, picked up by Pono Ledford, who are the Wolseys, and now we have aloha. And they all are working together to bring this to fruition for our people. I'm sure there is some concern, but let's be honest in the testimony. We have many Hawaiian groups, civic clubs, and others coming in now. We've tried repeatedly. But what we're really facing is a mainland monopoly from Texas came in in 2003 and decided to limit the options for the people here. And when I myself called them, Senator Joy, to talk with them, they told me, you know, Hawaiians don't have money. Hawaiians can't afford these things. No one disagrees with that. Let us pay the $400,000. Let us take the sterile bones to the burial caves, and we will get the canoes to take it to the ocean, just like our Willed Bodies Program does every year. There's no threat to the people of Hawaii. If anything, you should be aware that the World Health Organization approved this years ago when they were facing the threat of the bovine virus. They didn't know if it could be spread by the air or spread in the soil. That is why the World Health Organization approved it. I know I was a diplomat there at the time. Let's not use fake excuses to prevent Hawaii's native people from doing what is culturally appropriate. When I see this type of argument year after year, it looks like veiled racism to me. Thank you.
Okay, Mililani, thank you so much. I'm in favor of it. I just want to make sure that the people on the Big Island will also have the opportunity to have it. Thank you.
We will, we will ensure it.
Mahalo. Any other questions, members? Okay, seeing none, let's recess for decision-making. Recession. Recession.
Senator Sandman Ventura?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Senator Vavala?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted, five ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to adjourn the Joint Hawaiian Health. And we're going to gavel into the Joint Hawaiian Housing Committee. Thanks for your patience. So first up, we have SB 1322 relating to HHFTC. So first up, we have HHFTC in opposition.
Good afternoon, Chair Shimabukuro and Chair Chang Francis Kino for HHFTC. Our executive director Denise Isari Matzubaro sends her regrets. She's currently participating in another legislative committee hearing. HHFTC opposes the Senate Bill 1322. First of all, we note that it adds one additional member to our Board of Directors. However, the language still keeps nine members as the board total. And I think that's a defect that would need to be corrected. Technical error that would need to be corrected. On the merits, we oppose this Senate bill. We believe that our current relationship with OHA, Hawaiian homelands, has been very collaborative and we're working together to address our common problems. Having the Chair of the Hawaiian Homelands on our Board of Directors, we believe would present a conflict of interest. This concept of the interlocutory, interlocking directorate would provide, produce a conflict of interest as well as possible breach of confidential information between the two organizations. And for those general reasons, we oppose the Senate bill. We ask that it be kept in committee. Thank you.
Mahalo. Next up, we have DHHL in support.
Aloha. Of all the other people, on behalf of Chairman Illo, who is currently busy in our monthly Hawaiian Homes Commission meeting, we'll stand on our written and I'll just offer a response to the deputy from HHFTC's concern that we don't see the same conflicts with the other directors or their designees on the, on the board. That would be, that's how we'd address that.
Mahalo. Next, we have OHA in support. Mutual Housing Association of Voice, opposition. Hawaiian Community Development Board, support. Gracie comments. Marissa Baptista, opposition. Banner Fanene comments. Leomomi Khan, support. Homelani Shadell in support. See Ms. Shadell.
Aloha. Chair Shimabukuro and Chair Vice Chairs Kiho Kaloli and Kanuha and members of the committee. My name is Homelani Shadell, a beneficiary homestead leader residing in Kaukulei and an advocate for the Hawaiian Homes Commission. Placing a seat on the Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation's Board table for the Department of Hawaiian Homelands is long overdue. This bill addresses the importance of being inclusive and brings into balance two state entities to address affordable housing for HHCA beneficiaries and the public. Addressing and finding solutions to our affordable housing concerns should have taken place 20 years ago. Unprepared COVID-19 blindsided our world, leaving our state with limited financial resources. Our affordable housing concerns are now a crisis at the worst possible time. We no longer can stand by and say we do not have the funding or resources to address our affordable housing crisis. I believe all people of our state will be better served through the combined efforts, energy, and experience from public and government sectors like DHHL on HHFTC's board. In the words of our ancestors, "No task is too big when done together by all." Consideration and passage of this bill will reflect your commitment in finding solutions to better serve our people. Mahalo for allowing me time to share my manao.
Thank you. Kamala Warner in support. Is anyone else for SB 1322? You see none, members, any questions? Yes, Vice Chair Okulok.
For DHHL?
Yes.
Is Tyler and DHHL still on?
Oh, we are. We're having difficulty getting the video started, but we can hear you.
Let me clarify, just for the, just for the record and the viewers watching, your, your comments allude to a lack of a conflict from other agency participators on the HHFTC board. Can you, can you elaborate?
I think it's a simple question of calling the Ethics Commission, and they probably give you similar advice. No conflict exists. If the director or their designated for other state agencies who partner with HHFTC can share a seat on the board, I don't see the logical commotion between Hawaiian homes specifically suddenly being in conflict from any decision-making.
What agencies are you referring to?
I'm sorry. I believe both DBED and Finance, Budget and Finance also have seats on the HHFTC board unlike the DHHL.
Chair, if I can ask HHFTC to clarify?
Sure.
Those comments?
Just want to say, you know, if the Hawaiian Homelands Chair is on the HHFTC board, would the Hawaiian Homelands Chair be voting with the interest of all the residents in Hawaii or focusing on its, the native Hawaiians? And so I think that's where the conflict is most pronounced. And so, you know, and that's not present with the DBED Director or the Director of Finance. So that's my response.
Aren't, isn't production of housing pursuant to the Department of Hawaiian Homelands constitutional mandate in the best interest of the residents of the state of Hawaii?
Well, it's in the Constitution. I'm not sure if it extends to the exclusion of the non-Hawaiians. So, you know, it's.
But, okay, I guess we'll just ignore those sections of the Constitution. Thank you, Chair.
Chair, I have a question.
I think Senator Hara might have had his hand up first, then I'll go to Senator Morawaki. So Senator Hara?
Yes, I'd like to find somewhere, Chair, to request an opinion because to me, it's a very clear conflict of interest because if a, if a proposal comes before the Board, Hawaii Housing Finance Development Corporation Board, the Chair, the difference is a fiduciary. There's a fiduciary legal responsibility and the Chair cannot vote contrary to that, to that fiduciary responsibility. So the conflict would be, if there's a proposal that was endorsed by Hawaiian Homelands, then the Chair is legally, I believe, obligated, or the Chair cannot vote against the fiduciary interest that he represents. Now, I suppose if, if he's there in another capacity but just happens to sit on it, you know, not by virtue of his fiduciary role, then, then there may be, so there may be, I, I, I'm open to the idea of finding a way around the legal conflict. Could be an appointment that the Chair makes or designates, the Commission designates a member or designates a member not representing the fiduciary duties, but still being, having a seat on the board. I'm open to that. But right now, I'd like to get in a, some kind of, maybe an Ethics Commissioner, or really it should be the Attorney General to, to indicate whether this is okay or not. Because if there's a conflict, the governor's going to veto it, you know, anyway. And so I'd, I'd like to, or if the Chair doesn't, then I'll, I'll request it anyway. But I do think we need to settle the conflict issue somewhere or another.
Okay, if you could request that opinion, that'd be great, Senator Hara.
Okay.
Okay, and then Senator Morawaki?
Yes, I do have a question of Francis Kino. You know, in terms of HHFTC and its charge of looking at really financing of affordable housing, I too question the Board membership because the three ex-official members right now are representing the Governor's Office. It's DBED because HHFTC sits in DBED. And, and then I know there's the BNF. So they're all having to do with financing. And the rest of the nine-member Board are all public members. So who are the other nine and how does that fit with the charge of HHFTC?
Okay.
Okay.
You want to know who the other, the public members are?
All public except for the three ex-official, which are government agencies. So as, as we look at whether it's appropriate for DHHL to sit, sit on the Board, we're looking at the roles of the ex-official, public agencies versus public members. So who are the public members to determine whether, if it's appropriate or not?
Okay, real quickly, the public members are Don Mendy, Gary Mackler from Kauai, Don Mendy is from Maui, Rona Fukamoto, Kaua Reiman.
What are their agencies? Are they public agencies or are they private individuals? And what are their roles in, in terms of their membership?
Senator, I'm Janice Takahashi. I'm, I'm here to support Francis on that. The public members represent, they're from each of the counties and one at large. They represent people with expertise in development or financing. One of the members is with a, represents housing advocacy. So from a nonprofit advocating for affordable housing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Members, any other questions? Okay. Oh, yes, Vice Chair.
I have another question for HHFTC. I guess Francis or Janice, you know, if there's a situation where there's the appearance of impropriety due to the perception of a conflict, haven't members of the Board in those past instances recused themselves from individual matters?
I'm not aware of prior, I mean, if any, an actual situation where a Board member has recused itself. Janice, are you aware of such a situation?
I've been there a lot. Francis has been here for all of, I don't know, 20 months. Yes, members do recuse themselves if they see some kind of a conflict.
And then, you know, for, I guess, for, just one more follow-up for DHHL and then I'll stop.
Yep.
Okay, so the Supreme Court in the Ahuna case designated the state of Hawaii with, or recognized that the state of Hawaii is imbued with fiduciary responsibilities to facilitate the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act. I got, that's the right case, right?
I believe, no. Is it Ahuna? It is Ahuna, yep.
Okay, and so, and so the ruling in that case was not specified to one individual state agency, was it?
No, it's not. And that would align with our belief that the state of Hawaii shares the responsibility fulfilling the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act. It's a condition of the Constitution. The department is charged with the execution of that. But the fiduciary responsibility essentially lies across all departments of the state, I think is where you're going with this question.
Yeah, that's exactly where I'm going. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Senator Hara, do you have another question? You know, unmute yourself, please.
I will be, I'll be asking the Attorney General for an opinion. But our question is, if anyone knows any other, well, first question is, what other, this is a civics test. What other boards or commissions in this state, what other state boards or commissions, our trust have, they serve as trustees with a legal fiduciary. I believe there's only, I think ER, Employees Retirement System. I don't think there's any other that have a fiduciary, have a trustee role. They have legal duties, but as a trustee. And so, and so I'm looking for, if anyone has any others you want to mention. But the question really is, are there any, any, any crossover members on a trustee? Are there any state trustees serving on another board? And, you know, and if that, if there is, and that would be a good precedent. And the issue, the conflict of interest would have arisen there. And maybe that'll give us an idea of how to get around, if there is a, get around a fiduciary conflict. The concern I have, although it is addressed by Senator Kiho Koholoi's idea that if there is a conflict where the Chair of Hawaiian Homelands is not able to support something that is, let's say, opposed by Hawaiian homelands and therefore, you know, feels that there's a, and yet he has a fiduciary responsibility, he could, I guess, recuse himself and that would avoid it. So that might be a potential response. But the question is, if anyone has any examples of any trustee serving on another state board?
Senator Hara, I believe OHA has a seat on the Koholavi Island Reserve Commission.
Okay, so that, that might be a good example. Oh, they're, yeah. And they have, they have an elected status. They're a constitutional status. So that, that's slightly, yeah, so that, that's a good example.
Okay. I don't know if there's any others. Okay, members, any, any other questions or discussion? I've seen that.
Yeah, just, just a quick one. I just, you know, listening to the dialogue going back and forth, trying to find another committee. I mean, right now, we're going in a transition of trying to, you know, keep our kuliana kuliana, yeah? Right now, we're already having a hard time as them running their own department. That's my perspective. And going in to another department and having Sam being on the board, I, I just think they just should stay with their own kuliana right now. But they can't even handle their own situation right now in Hawaiian homes. They want to jump ship and tell somebody else what to do in their committee. I mean, I think this is off the beaten path. So I definitely will be voting no on this subject.
Okay, mahalo. Okay, let's, let's move on. SB 1334, the last bill on our joint agenda. This is regarding Kakaako and OHA's lands there. So first up, we have OHA in support.
Madam Chair.
Aloha.
Good afternoon, Chairs Shimabukuro and Chang and Vice Chairs Kiho Kaloli and Kanuha and members of the Hawaiian Affairs and Housing Committees. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I am Carmen Hulu Lindsay, the Board Chair for the Trustees of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. With me today is our Chief Executive Officer, Dr. Sylvia Hutsi. The Office of Hawaiian Affairs strongly supports Senate Bill 1334. I wanted to take this opportunity to briefly summarize some key points from our written testimony. We are asking that the current restriction against residential development be lifted on six of OHA's parcels in Kakaako Makai and that the building height limit be raised to 400 feet for two of our properties on Alamoana Boulevard. This bill would provide the agency increased revenue opportunities to fund the programs and services for our beneficiaries. This bill will allow us to unlock the potential of our Kakaako Makai lands, envision a mixed-use project that creates a Hawaiian sense of place, incorporates culture and commerce, and draws our community to a revitalized urban core. Without housing, our project cannot provide a robust live, work, and play community as seen, as seen in the Maoka Kakaako parcels. This bill is also about fairness for native Hawaiians. The current residential prohibition is a state law that restricts OHA from developing housing and housing-associated projects Makai of, excuse me, of Alamoana Boulevard, unlike landowners with parcels immediately Maoka of OHA's property. All we are asking is that this native Hawaiian-serving agency be afforded the same land use options for its parcels as those enjoyed by our Maoka neighbors. These 10 parcels valued at $200 million were conveyed to OHA in 2012 to settle the state's debt owed to the native Hawaiian people from proceeds from the Public Land Trust. In 2014, OHA was unsuccessful in its efforts to have the legislature provide the agency with the ability to build housing in Kakaako Makai. OHA then proceeded with conceptual master plans and conducted statewide meetings in 2015 and 2016 to share our progress. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much, trustee. And, you know, we have 33 in support, 99 in opposition, and three with comments. I'm just going to read off those that are going to participate today. So we have Friends of Kiwalo in opposition. Yiwami family, are they here? No, and we have.
They're here.
Okay, yes. Proceed, Friends of Kiwalos.
Okay. Okay, aloha, everyone. Chair Shimabukuro, Chair Chang, and the committee members, and also aloha to the people who are viewing. My name is Ron Ywami. I am the president of Friends of Kiwalos. We're a nonprofit. Our mission is to protect and preserve Emma Lama Kiwalo Basin Park and surrounding shoreline areas to ensure access for the people. I am testifying in strong opposition against Senate Bill 1334. And before I go further, I want to make it clear that our group is not against OHA. We are not against the Hawaiian people. And we believe in your mission. We are against the principle of building private residences on public oceanfront land and the ability to convey it to a third party so that they can build. In my eyes, that amounts to selling the public land. So in other words, I'm saying whether it be AMV, OHA, Can School, or anybody else who wants to build there, we will fight for this principle. Yeah. My written testimony I submitted was basically a must-read backstory for the legislators who did not experience our battle back in 2005. Because it will educate you to make the right decision. In summary, is this, that's how the law, it explains how the law came to be and how OHA got the land in the first place. In 2005, it was totally a grassroots effort, rallied all the legislators to, to stop the sale of the public land. And this principle, principle goes beyond the shores of Kakaako Makai. It is a statewide and global, you know, issue. We need to protect what public oceanfront lands are left in our whole island, and it's for the people, like me, thousands flock to the oceans every day. It fuels our body, mind, and soul, it enables us to thrive. As a people, it defines us as a people.
Please summarize.
Okay, summarize. In closing, this is my closing. You, the legislators, and OHA have a huge responsibility as stewards of the land to respect its history, the law and the principle, and think beyond making the big buck, the big, a quick buck. In five to 10 years, the money will be gone. The tower to remain is that the legacy you want to leave. True riches of the land come when you can provide for the Hawaiian people, and in turn, the broader public, year after year, generation after generation, in perpetuity. That is how we thrive. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Malama Moana in opposition? Are they here? Okay, yes, Ms. Lee, go ahead. Unmute yourself, please. We have two minutes. We still can't, can you folks hear? I can't hear. Yeah, I can't hear you. Technical. Okay. Maybe we, we'll come back to Malama Moana if you can try and work on your computer. Yeah. Okay, then we have Hawaiian Community Development Board in support. Are they here? Okay, okay, Ms. Lee, are you there now? Okay, I still can't hear you, unfortunately. Okay, so next we have Kakaako Makai Community Planning Advisory Council in opposition, Wayne Takamine. Is he here?
He is, Senator.
I'm here.
Yes, go ahead, proceed.
Well, as a founding member of the Kakaako Makai Community Planning Advisory Council and the acting chair, actually the chair, we oppose this, and it's just, it just goes back to 2005 when the original AMB RFP was introduced by HCDA. We don't see too much difference in, in this new proposal by OHA. It seems to be the same thing that's been going on for the amount of time that OHA has been transferred the land. I work with Ronnie Wami as one of the groups that are part of the Kakaako Makai stakeholders. And we actually approached OHA before it was transferred, and we had just had our Kakaako Makai Master Plan approved by the board in 2011. And we talked to Chair of OHA, and she said that we like your stuff, we, we know, and we actually supported OHA to get the land transferred. And we told them that this is very much what we would like to do if you can help us to get the Kakaako Makai Master Plan moving forward. Unfortunately, OHA had other ideas, and they went into trying to get the entitlements to do residential development and also, and this one, I, I see they want to also convey the land to third parties. I have very big concerns about conveying the lands to third party because of the audit that was done of OHA, and a lot of these third parties did not come up with any transparency at all. Also, the concerns, of course, when it comes on to residential, then it comes on to ownership. People live there, eventually they want to own the land that they are under, even under these conditions. There's lease-to-ownership conveniences, maybe 10, 20, 30 years down the line, they're going to want to own their own units. Also, in order for them, the original AMB plan, in order for AMB to, to put up these three condominiums of 200 feet, they had to get arrangement with the developers, so the developers would own part of the land. I think they were going to sell the land for. Yeah, so in other words, this proposal, it actually goes against laws that are existing. The CPAC supports existing laws, and so we strongly oppose this measure.
Thank you. You know, going forward, Eric, if we can do a one-minute time limit, so sorry, everyone, but we'd have testimony to go through, we have another agenda after this, too, so one-minute time limit. So Life of the Land Opposition, are they here? Henry?
Not present, Senator, but Audrey Lee is ready with audio now.
Okay, okay, Ms. Lee, go ahead.
You have to press star six, Audrey.
Okay. Thank you very much. Dear Senators, I'm speaking on behalf of Malama Moana to strongly oppose SB 1334 and to strongly support the testimony of Friends of Kiwalos. The attempt to once again open up the shoreline for development and set a very bad precedent is deplorable, and those pushing this forward again must be stopped. This was not acceptable before, and it has not become acceptable now despite the passing of time. So, you know, the law has protected this land from becoming another Waikiki up till now to ensure that this last public oceanfront land in Honolulu will be preserved for the enjoyment of all the people of Hawaii. Let us not take away that protection of free ocean access for the people. Please vote no on SB 1334. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. HCDA with comments?
Thank you, Chairs, Vice Chairs, and Member of Committee. HCDA stands on its written testimony.
Thank you so much. See, Marvin Yoshizumi, opposition? Are they here? Is he here?
Not present, Senator.
And I think Hawaiian Community Development Board, I already called, support. They're not here. Okay. Is there anyone else here for SB 1334 that I missed? Okay, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Adell?
Yes, aloha. Chairs Shimabukuro and Chang, Vice Chairs Keho Kalole and Kanuha. My name is Homelani Shadell, beneficiary of the Hawaiian Homes Commissions Act and the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. In the early 50s, growing up at Neneu Pukai was my swimming pool with the Army breast camp on the west end of the bay. The first time my friends and I tried to walk across the beach to get to Kokeune Stream, we were yelled at by the MPs to get in the water and swim back to your side of the beach. I went home, told my tutu, and asked her why. She said that land now belongs to the military. Then I said, but the ocean and the beach belongs to everyone. She looked at me with a sadness I had not seen before, turned and walked away. Even at eight years old, I understood her silence meant I was not to ask that question again. In 2014, I testified on HB 2554, and I will share some points of my testimony with you.
Need to summarize, and are you a supporter of opposition?
I would like to see this bill passed. I'm here seven years later, and my question is, is Kakaako Makai really payment in full by the state of Hawaii to native Hawaiians of a debt 40 years old with strings attached? Do we still need to stay on our side of Alamoana Boulevard?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, members, any questions? No questions here, we're in recess for decision-making.
Thank you, Senator.
For decision-making for SB 1322, recommendation is to pass as is, noting the opposition in the committee report is something that the JDC committee could possibly consider. Any discussion, members?
Or could you?
Yes.
Did you note the conflict which is questioned and that a member will be, or somehow will be getting some kind of a legal advice on that?
Yes, of course, so listen, you can include that as well in the committee report. Any further discussion or questions? You seen none, Vice Chair?
That's, that's unamended, right, Chair?
Yes, unamended.
Okay, members, voting on SB 1322, the Chair's recommendation is to pass this measure unamended, Chair Shimabukuro.
Aye.
Vice Chair goes aye, Senator Akasio.
Reservations.
Senator Ihara.
Reservations.
Senator Favella.
No.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thanks.
And the same recommendation from the Committee on Housing to pass this measure unamended.
Committee on Housing Chair's recommendation for SB 1322 is to pass unamended, Chair Chang.
Aye.
Vice Chair votes aye, Senator Moriwaki.
Reservation.
Reservation for Senator Moriwaki, Senator.
Sorry, was that me? I couldn't hear you.
SB 1322.
I just didn't hear, couldn't hear whether you said my name or not. If it's me, yes, aye.
Aye for Senator Rhodes, Senator Favella.
No.
No for Senator Favella. Chair, you have four ayes, three ayes, one aye with reservations, and one no. Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. SB 1334, recommendations to pass with technical amendments and note opposition in the committee report as well. Any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair?
Members, this is unamended, right? Oh, technical amendment.
Technical, yeah, technical.
Thank you. Members, we're voting on SB 1334, the Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, Chair Shimabukuro.
Aye.
Vice Chair goes aye, Senator Akasio.
Aye.
Senator Ihara.
Aye.
I'm sorry?
No.
Thank you. Senator Favella.
Aye.
Chair, three in favor to know that recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you, and the same recommendation for Senate Bill 1334 for the Committee on Housing to pass with amendments.
Recommendation for Committee on Housing SB 1334 is to pass with amendments, Chair Chang.
Aye.
Vice Chair votes aye, Senator Moriwaki.
Well, no for the reason of preserving our shoreline in urban Honolulu. No.
No for Senator Moriwaki, Senator Rhodes.
Reservations.
Reservations for Senator Rhodes, Senator Favella.
Aye.
Chair, you have three ayes, one with reservations, and one no. Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Adjourns our joint committee. Thank you, and I'm going to gavel into the Hawaiian-only committee. Got to really jam through this, guys, so I'm going to ask people, because we only have 15 minutes to go, if you're willing to stand on your testimony, we greatly appreciate it. So we'll start with SB 1122. Anyone wishing to testify, but live, we have your written testimony. Okay, members, any questions? Okay, SB 1123, anyone wants to testify on this one? Raise your hand, speak up. Okay. SB 1246, panel? Any testifiers? SB 1409? Any testifiers? Wants to testify, raise your hand. Oh, Leilani Pelter?
Hi, aloha.
Hi.
Start video.
Aloha. I'm sorry, Leitani, sorry.
Vice Chair Keho Kalole, and members of the committee, Leitani Pelter on behalf of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, testifying in support of SB 1409. You have our written testimony, but I'd just like to emphasize that this Native Hawaiian Law Training Course provides important legal, historical, and cultural context that is directly relevant to the state's fiduciary duties to native Hawaiians and the public trust. And it should be noted that these fiduciary duties are imposed upon all state agencies, departments, and individuals acting in an official capacity on behalf of the state, counties too for that matter. So a broad understanding of these fiduciary duties is especially important for the boards and commission members whose decisions directly impact native Hawaiians and the public trust. And for these reasons, we hope that you would pass SB 1409. Mahalo.
Thank you so much. SB 85, any testifiers for this bill? Raise your hand. Now, we have your written testimony. SB 86, any testifiers? I'm, I'm sorry, members, questions? If you have any questions for these measures, please let me know. SB 86? Any testifiers? Raise your hand. Okay, if not, let's, let's recess for decision-making. Okay, we're back for decision-making, so starting with SB 1122, recommendation is to pass with technical amendments, summarize opposition in the committee report, and ask JDC committee to consider those points in the opposition. Any discussion, members? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair?
Members voting on SB 1122, the Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair Shimabukuro.
Aye.
Vice Chair goes aye, Senator Akasio.
Aye.
Senator Favella, I mean, I'm sorry, Senator Ihara.
Aye, with reservations.
Senator Favella.
Aye, with reservations.
Chair recommendation adopted.
Thank you. SB 1123, recommendation is to pass with the recommend, with the amendments recommended by OHA, and also technical amendments. Any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair?
Members voting on SB 1123, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, Chair Shimabukuro.
Aye.
Vice Chair goes aye, Senator Akasio.
Aye.
Senator Ihara.
Aye, with reservations.
Senator Favella.
Aye, with reservations.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. SB 1409, recommendation is to pass with technical amendments.
Chair, I believe you skipped 1246.
Oh, I think we did, we did 1246. I think we did, yeah, 1246. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. SB 1246, thank you. Pass with technical amendments. Any, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair?
Okay, members voting on SB 1246, the recommendation is to pass with amendments, Chair Shimabukuro.
Aye.
Vice Chair goes aye, Senator Akasio.
Aye.
Senator Ihara.
Aye, with reservations.
Senator Favella.
Aye, with reservations.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. SB 1409, recommendations to pass with technical amendments. Any concerns or discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair?
Members voting on SB 1409, the recommendation is to pass with amendments, Chair Shimabukuro.
Aye.
Vice Chair goes aye, Senator Akasio.
Aye.
Senator Ihara.
Aye, with no reservations.
Thank you, Senator Favella.
Aye.
Chair, five ayes straight up, recommendation adopted.
Okay, thank you, and SB 85, recommendations to pass with technical amendments. Any discussion or questions?
Chair, I'd like to, I'd like to comment.
Sure.
Chair, thank you for this measure. I'm going to be voting with reservations, because whereas the, the gaming legislation being contemplated later in the agenda, I think, you know, if you actually look into the science, there's a dispute about whether that measure, whether those practices can be implemented in a way that minimizes the regressive nature of that activity on the, on the community. There, my understanding is there's a consensus that a lottery is regressive. And that there is little to mitigate the, the fact that the overwhelming majority of participants in a lottery that's localized will be the folks on the lower end of the socioeconomic spectrum, so we will essentially be taxing them to generate revenue to service them, and I have some concerns about that, so I'll be going with reservations, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, then seeing none, Vice Chair?
Members voting on SB 85, SD1, the recommendation is to pass this measure with amendments. Chair Shimabukuro.
Aye.
Vice Chair goes with reservation, Senator Akasio.
Aye.
Senator Ihara.
Aye.
Senator Favella.
Oh.
Chair, your recommendation is not adopted.
Okay. Okay. SB 85, recommendation is to pass with amendments. I'd like to insert the legislation that DHL had drafted, which they mentioned in their testimony. Any other technical amendments that are needed? Any discussion or comments? Seen none, Vice Chair?
Members voting on SB 86, SD1, the recommendation is to pass this measure with amendments, Chair Shimabukuro.
Aye.
Vice Chair goes aye, Senator Akasio.
Ahole.
Senator Ihara.
Aye with reservations.
Senator Favella.
Oh.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, and then finally, SB 1321, recommendation is to pass with an SD1 to adopt the amendments that were recommended by Senator De La Cruz. Talking about self-determination and that this would be something that the Hawaiian Homes Commission, by a supermajority, would have to adopt, not limiting to casinos, but to whatever form of gaming they may or may not decide on with a five-year sunset. What, I want to summarize the bullet points that summarize the SD1 in the committee report and any other technical amendments that are needed. If I miss anything, Alyssa. And that's basically it. Okay, but any questions, discussion, comments? SB 1321.
Chair, I have comments.
Sure.
This measure is egregiously divisive. It's a distraction from the mission, Hawaiian Homes Commission Act of housing Kanaka on Kanaka lands. Settler culture seems to love to watch Hawaiians fight against Hawaiians. And this measure, in my experience with constituents and those writing in, is exactly that. Adding to more deep historical trauma, generational cultural trauma. What is agreed upon is that DHL needs adequate funding so that it can deliver. And that DHL also has a beneficiary consultation process that seems flawed. And that even though it's, the narrative becomes self-determination, if, if those beneficiaries do not feel like they're represented by the commission based on many reasons, whether it's because they're appointed by the governor or also vetted by the Senate and also not with a proper consultation process, then it's not indeed self-determination. So being that the Supreme Court affirmed that the legislature has a constitutional mandate to provide funding and to fully fund DHL, we must stop with the false narrative that there is no money. There is, there is only no money if we continue to look for it from those with no money. Robin Hood knows this. Right? So the success on tax the wealthy to feed and house the, those without wealth becomes very clear, and that is our job then as the legislature to stand for that. So the risk of the social ills is far too great. And it is in, in the examples for the testimony, this is not Norway, this is not Singapore. We're starting from a completely different place with different social nets or lack thereof. So I will be voting in the way of the huge majority of my constituents and representatives of Hawaiian homelands and beneficiaries. Mahalo for your, for your time for this. Mahalo.
And actually, members, upon second thought, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to defer this measure until Thursday at one o'clock to give more, this additional time to try to work on this bill. But in the meantime, any, any, is there any other discussion? Any other comments?
Questions? You know, Senator, I just, I mean, I understand you, you're working very hard, and I know you are under pressure, and I know we had this talk. We're kicking a can down the road and trying to change this whichever, which way we can. Our constituents in your community, my community, and a lot of different communities have spoken loudly when this first came about to the, to the commissioners when they had the vote. And it's only getting louder, the voice. So I understand you want to defer it another day for voting, but it's just right now to me, you know, we should go on with the vote and get it over with because if we continue the way we're going, it's like how Senator Casio just said, we're having division. And the bottom line is, you know, Senator, you know, I'm concerned about everybody here in the building, and I don't think you deserve a lot of the negativity. You're just doing your job as a senator, like how we all do. But just so much legal ramifications that's going to catch us later on and bite us in the rear. I mean, I'm just saying, this, this is just started off the way really how they had presented it to the commissioners, gave them only four days to consider it, and then they voted. They didn't have a consultation with the governor, they didn't have consultation with the lieutenant governor, they didn't have any consultation with our law enforcement agencies and our health, health agencies here in Hawaii. So all of this was just started on a bad note. And to kick it down the road is just going to make things even just worse. Because you, me, all of us on this committee have overwhelming emails, and I know because I have. Even though they know I'm going to vote no, it doesn't matter to them. They're just expressing their point and their feeling. So that's my suggestion, Senator, and you're going to do what you need to do, but I just pray that we just continue to move on and get this over with. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, well, we're actually, we're out of time anyway, so we're going to have to, okay, Senator, we actually, we have to stop. It's 2:30, so I've been told by IT, I'm sorry, Senator Ihara.
So Just wanted, just want to note, I'm, I'm a little concerned about after you make the recommendation, then you defer, and after you poll the members, and you know that's going to go down. And that's why I didn't respond to your poll, because the chairs, you use the poll, and then, then if you don't have the votes, then you, then you lobby. So it's not really, to me, it's not a mutual process. So I just want to raise that concern, and I know we're out of time. And I know you didn't really mean to, you know, have this negative part, but I think it is a, it is a criticism that we'll just have to weather.
Yeah, and vote your conscience. Vote your conscience on Thursday, and so I give the commissioners time if possible, if they didn't see the SD1. But yeah, vote your conscience on Thursday. But thank you so much. We have to adjourn now. Thank you. So at one o'clock Thursday, virtual, we'll hear SB 1324, DM, 1321. Thank you.